I'll call this meeting to an end. The first item on the agenda is a continuation of site plan review for Componing PAC. This has been going on for a while and we're trying to get a few things straightened out so that we can go on with the permit. First off, who's going to speak first?
Yes.
Okay, we'll hear from the engineer, Eric Dias, to make his presentation and then we have some things to discuss.
Can I just ask that everybody do this themselves because there's new faces here tonight?
Okay.
And I don't know who they are.
Okay. On my far right is Tony Kinnahan, James Nores, Jerry Stetson, Hugh Hurley, the chairman, Tracy Aldrich, who is the town planner, and Donna, our recording secretary. And also the town council's mayor, Costa, the mayor of the front row, is here. So that's the upper portion. As the others, anybody that does speak, even though we know a lot of you, just for the fact that Donna can't see you, say who you are so that she will know. And at that point, anybody who'll have a chance. I ask that, I'll be glad to hear the questions, but I want the proponents to be here to make their presentation and then we're going to be asking them some questions. And then if there's some concerns, we'll open it up at that time.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to put these over here if that's okay. I don't need to grab you gentlemen, but I think this is probably the best location in the room that we're in right now. Yeah, I don't know how to fix that. I'll have to do a panel light type of thing and show people the plan.
Eric, we have copies of the plan here so you can...
So face it.
You can share it. If we need a clarification, we'll have you rotate it to show us. I think, I think we're pretty well...
Pretty well familiar.
Yeah, if you could just tell us what sheet you're looking at.
Absolutely, absolutely. I want to start with the utility sheet, sheet C3. And I'm just going to bring this, pace the crowd a little bit this way. Okay, so for the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strong Point Engineering Solutions, representing the applicant, DNR Realty LLC. With me tonight is Mr. William Joak, who is the project manager, construction manager, and attorney Nicholas Gomes, who is counsel for the client. So let me first make an apology. I understand that we missed a meeting on the 17th, I believe it was. We had a line crossed. I was under the impression that we were on tonight's meeting, never even thought to look at the agenda. Our apologies.
And I should have part of it too because I should have followed up on it. So let's say it happened as bad as...
Quite all right. On my end, I just hate to waste anybody's time, so apologies both to the board and to the residents who I know were probably here. The last time that we had a public hearing on this, it was known that we needed to go before the Conservation Commission for both a stormwater permit and a notice of intent. The boards, and I'm paraphrasing, but their instruction was basically, "Go take care of Concom, get whatever approvals or whatever may happen there, and then come back to us." So we did that. We went before the Conservation Commission for a stormwater permit and a notice of intent. We had originally asked for some waivers for a portion of the site that was paved within the buffer zone. They told us no, so we withdrew that waiver. They put us through our paces with regard to stormwater management. The result is a pretty extensive stormwater system. It's going to provide a lot of groundwater recharge and a lot of water quality treatment that doesn't exist on-site today. So from a stormwater perspective, I think we've made leaps and bounds. It was peer-reviewed under 53G by Allen and Major Associates. Their recommendation to the commission was to approve. They felt that we met this to the maximum extent feasible, and they did approve and issued the stormwater permits. So from that time, we kind of got back in touch with the board and said that we'd like to come back in. We've made a couple of changes to the plans. Nothing tremendous since the last time we were here. We've added, and I've got a little list of things here, that we've just, we've clarified the location of the cell tower, we clarified the extent of the concrete pad, we show some power stations that are along the fence on the Glenmere side. We've noted that those power stations are to be taken away. We've replaced some plantings that we had proposed along the Snell property in this location with a stockade fence because we felt it provided better screening. We've provided additional abreviated screening on the existing loading ramp in the front of the building between North Main Street and the building now. We've added some notation about snow storage and how to deal with that and to get it off the site when the snow storage areas are full. We've added notation again that the power stations are to be taken away. We've added some additional detail on the lighting and some notation at the lightings. All exterior lights are to have, be on a timer and have a dimmer and a turn-off function after hours. So I believe that encapsulates obviously all the Concom comments, but also all the comments that this board had as well. So I think from a site plan perspective, we've achieved the goal and hit the marks. But I know obviously there are some other things to talk about, so Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Would you point out exactly where the new abrevieties are going?
The new abrevieties? So let's go to sheet C2. You see, if you, I know you can't see where my finger is, but if you come in from North Main Street, you're looking right at an existing concrete ramp. We have 15 proposed abrevieties along the side of that ramp to screen and help create a little bit of a noise barrier between us and the folks, the residential units over on Glenmere. In addition to, we are proposing another 45 abrevieties for screening over on Glenmere now. Those have always been proposed. And then on the Snell side, on Howard Street, we've actually removed some abrevieties and we're opting to put up a fence just because of space restraints that we have there.
Okay, so in effect, the houses on Glenmere will have, all along their boundary will be abrevieties?
That is correct, yes.
And how big are these trees? Are they going to be the same caliber as the ones that are there that you had put in before?
Yes. Yep, they're going to be the same green giants, I believe. And anybody that'll get wrong, these things grow about two feet a year, and they go in at a pretty substantial height. I believe that fence that's there now is an eight-foot fence, and they go in at least that height.
Yeah, I'd say they're about 12 to 14 feet at this point.
Could you point out exactly where the snow storage is going to be? Or is it, is it on C3?
Yeah, it's on C2. There is an area, if you look in the back of C2, there's an area that's got a gray hatch that shows where the concrete pad is back there.
Okay, yeah.
There's a dashed area on there for snow storage. Obviously, we can't capture all the snow and push it that way. So from there, it's instructed that the snow will be pushed to the sides of the paved areas, and when those things reach capacity, it's time to truck it off the site.
And you have a lighting plan. Could you go to that and demonstrate what is happening there?
Absolutely. So lighting plan is sheet C...
Four.
Let's say four. You may recall our original plan for this is that we had lights proposed in the center of all the parking spaces that you see there. And the concern was that they would throw light, lighting in all directions, including toward Glenmere. So what we had talked about is we moved all those light poles off to the side so they're backed up to Glenmere, shielded on that side so they don't cast light in that direction. And they're all downward facing, LED lights, dark sky compliant. We added a detail of the light itself to the sheet up in the upper right-hand corner, and we're showing zero-foot candles at the property lines as a result. So we do not anticipate that the lighting on this, if it is installed correctly, which it should be, by a licensed lighting contractor, is going to illuminate the neighbors. And additionally, we did add notation that these things are to be dimmed or turned off at the close of business.
Will there be any lights left in there, like a streetlight-type security light?
There'll be a security light. Certainly, there are lights along the building. There are pack lights along the building that will be replaced, and those will be downward facing. I would imagine that we would leave maybe one or two of those on overnight, but dimmed. We don't want to, you know, we're not gated here. We don't want to create a situation where kids can come back and do illicit things and stuff like that in the dark, so we've got to give them something.
Okay. And one of the contentions is hours of operation.
Yes, sir.
What are you proposing on that?
I'm going to actually direct that to Attorney Gomes.
Thank you very much, Sir Dias, for going over the physical features of this property as it pertains to the site plan approval process. I represent ICS, which is the tenant who operates the live plant distribution facility at this proposed location. There is common ownership with the applicant, Afoya, the DNR Realty. And on that basis, and being a business in operation since 2017, they find it imperative to come in here in support of this project, which of course is directly benefiting them in their operation into the future. They want to be a good community partner. They have, since the start of this process, they became involved and took steps in their operational policies to help eliminate and reduce some of the issues. They've worked closely with their engineering team so that the design of this facility at this location is suitable and works well with the neighbors. Pointing out this property and the main functions of the operation, the entrance on North Main Street, that's where the, most of the vehicles enter this property. They are generally there for the purpose of wholesale drop-off of plant material in large trucks. There's also a division of vans that perform more of the delivery-type service than moving around. A main element of operating this type of business is keeping the plants alive and being able to efficiently move several hundreds, thousands of plants at a time on a very fast schedule, because this is a matter of life or death for these plants, and the environment is required. One of the functionalities is using forklifts in this operation to help cut down on-demand labor. What we have done is transitioned to some electrical outfits. This reduces noise and is better for the environment. They're still propane, the traditional source that are in operation. Right now, and my proposal in getting this project approved is that once this project is able to go forward and is fully built out, it is designed to reduce the issues that are at hand. Notably, the renovations to the asphalt parking lot, which has been worn over time, and there's plenty of catchwork, and this is adding to those forklifts without suspension, making loud noise. That's where the loading facility occurs off to the side for those forklifts that is. The point of pointing this out is what we have done in the location where the plants are entering the building, there's the additional screening. This is where the bulk of the activity is going to occur. On the side that is most sensitive, on Glenmere, which I pointed out, is a very small portion of the boundary of this entire property, where the concerns are less with the majority of that land being with our fellow industrial companies, the Turner Steel and the business district along North Main Street and Howard Street. But here, we've taken specific precaution for those neighbors in Glenmere in understanding the potential plight of being close to a business. But at the end of the day, we must move forward and be able to continue and operate. The proposed design that is put forward to this board is going to help with those efficiencies of this company so that those issues are reduced, and it's part of the community partnership in reducing hours. And like I said, a lot of it is trusting in this company who's bringing commerce and jobs and employment to this area, and what everything that they do is they need to be able to operate. What we are ultimately seeking is a decision here that there is no hours of operation, first and foremost. And I will get into the alternative as well, but I want to state the basis so everyone understands. The design and layout of this board of the location is what the board's purview is generally under, under the ordinance that this town has charted creating this very board. This is not a special permit. This is not ICS, the business that's in front of you. It's the real estate owner. But notwithstanding that general objection of authority, ICS is willing and committed as a community partner to agree to these hours of operations voluntarily, but they must be reasonable to the company. In essence, the breakdown is Monday through Friday, 5 to 9, 5:00 AM, 9:00 PM. We seek that early extra hour where most people aren't even starting their day because there are various jobs in this world, but for ICS and its crew, it is integral to get onto the highway access in that early hour to be able to get these vehicles free of the stress and adding to the traffic that occurs. This is a main thoroughfare, and this is a main industrial district. The ability to get down to Route 24 and beyond is important to this company, and they're willing to stick to this type of schedule. Saturday is an opportunity where they're willing to, instead of coming in for 5, setting it to 6, and then 6 a.m., 6 p.m. This restriction is accommodating to the start of the weekend. And then Sunday, they can stick to the schedule of 12 to 9. And this is important to understand, this type of business goes back to live plants. It is unique to their operation that, like their partner, Turner Steel, for example, they don't have to worry about the steel going bad. It's going to sit in the pile, it'll be fine. But here, they need to be able to operate on this seven-day cycle, and any further interference is essentially moving towards infringement, which is going to cause the business to suffer, and we just simply can't do that, which is why they have me here, coming forward to essentially be the bearer of bad news in that regard. But they are committed. They have taken the steps, working with the engineering team, their building team, to build this out. And here, what I'm respectfully requesting is a vote approving this project so that they can go forward, they can show their merit. And if there is issue, there are alternative avenues which the town could take, including the board's selectmen, licensing, and otherwise, to look at how this might be a problem, if it becomes a nuisance. But here, we are coming to the board, asking for some deference to the fact of this being industrial district and everything that is a bonus that is going to occur with this business being able to increase the taxable basis of this property, bring it to its ultimate best use, and fix the issues in the back. The Conservation gave us the thumbs up regarding taking the remediation action and moving that forward. So on the basis of all of the meetings that we've been here before and the details that are presented, I hope the board can see that with Candor, we are working within the framework of this industrial district. We're trying to do things the right way, and we are operating as a good neighbor, and it's only going to get better with the potential of this project being approved. So with that, that's all I have to say. I'll be happy to answer any questions and go ahead and do specifics.
Okay. In the course of standing, you reminded me of something. Are you still planning on going ahead with the individual units that faced North Main Street?
At this time, we are, yes.
So that's still on the board? Anybody on the board have any, any questions?
The tenants on the spaces that Hugh just mentioned, they would work the same hours?
I don't...
Or they'd just work within those hours?
I think they would work within those hours. I think that, you know, they would have very different requirements if somebody was say a dry cleaner or a coffee shop or something like that. Again, I have them started quite as early as ICS needs to. But certainly, I think those would be on an individual, case-by-case basis.
You mentioned earlier about the lights on the Glenmore Street side being dimmed or shut down at close of business. Is that, you propose that would be automatic, or is that the responsibility of the person on site?
We can set those up to be automatic.
Automatic dimming, and then at a certain time, automatic shut-off.
Okay. I know some of the neighbors have some concerns that they would like to express to us, so at this time, we'll give you an opportunity to just ask that you introduce yourself for our recording secretary's benefit and whoever wants to speak.
Michael Bear, 32 Glenmere Street, West Bridgewater. My first question has to do with the adjustments that have been made to the drainage. What has been done, what is being done differently, and where is it located that the drainage is going to happen?
Should I do the check?
Which sheet is this going to be?
So essentially, the drainage is this. We have two subsurface infiltration systems. One located in this area off the concrete in the back, and one loaded in this area in the woods off the back of the building. This area will capture all of the runoff from the concrete through a catch basin, treated through a water quality separator, and then put into an infiltration field, where it will infiltrate into the ground to the maximum extent possible, and then it will control its discharge to the weather and bring it completely out of the way of Glenmere or anything like that. This, we are taking the entirety of the rooftop area. The front proposed area and the existing area, we're going to reroute all that stormwater. Instead of dumping it into the parking lot where it goes now, we're going to collect it, put it into another subsurface infiltration system in the back where it will infiltrate, and the runoff from that will actually be, or the overflow from that, excuse me, when it reaches capacity, will be piped into the closed drainage system and then out to where it discharges on Howard Street.
Is it going to still discharge over to the high school, to the school property over there?
Through the chair, yes. What happens is there's a catch basin right here on this property that comes to a manhole on this side of Howard Street, and then daylights to a swale that is located on the high school property. One of the things that the Conservation Commission asked us to do was camera those lines, make sure that they're in good working condition, which we did, and we provided evidence to the Conservation Commission that they're all set. And the other thing that we had to do was prove that we are not sending more flow there in the proposed condition than goes there in the existing condition, meaning that we will not be exasperating or contributing any additional floodwaters to that area.
So my first question is, is that along the property, and again, I speak for Mrs. Utka also, my neighbor who's also view butter. And I asked last meeting that you weren't here, so the selectmen simply believed that everything was happening. But when you talked about the abrevieties going along Mrs. Utka's property, is there not an eight-foot stockade fence going up there also? Starting where it ends right now on the end of Glenmere Street and going all the way along her property?
On the plan, we are not showing an extension of the stockade fence. We are only showing the abreviated screen.
But that was one of the things that was discussed way long before, that was one of the issues that needs to be addressed, because she doesn't want to be looking. I've got, I've got hundreds of pictures on my phone that I can see all that's going on over there, all the flowers, I mean, right from my front porch. She can see everything that's going on, all the racks of flowers that are there. It's ridiculous. And to have to wait every two years for these things to grow another two feet is ridiculous. We need to have that fence installed, because that was brought up in the very first meeting. So that's one of the things that I would like to see happen for Mrs. Utka and myself, because I don't feel like looking at those plants.
If I may address that, just before you move on?
Sure.
Through the chair. Certainly, if the board feels that that's an important thing, it's something they could condition to be added to the plans prior to endorsement.
There's currently a fence along your property.
There certainly is, yes. And would it be one or the other? Fence or abreviated screen?
Fence or abreviated, that would be up to the board.
I think both. The abreviate is, that's good to be the acoustical. The fence is just a visual. And I think ultimately, the acoustical is the important one. And in time, the abreviate will get so thick, it'll be a visual one also, but...
Yeah, in 10 years. But where my property line ended, when I put that eight-foot fence in, I don't know what the owner's name is, I can't remember his name. He approached me and asked me if I minded if he attached to my fence to go to the tree that's on the end of Glenmere Street so he could prevent kids from cutting through there to go to school in or whatever, which I agreed upon. So what I'm asking is that from that point, all the way along Mrs. Utka's property, that a eight-foot fence be installed, stockade fence.
Okay.
So I'm not done. I'm far from done.
Okay, go ahead.
So ICS has completely ignored any and all suggestions that the planning board has made at these previous meetings. Anything that dealt with the noise of running trucks, loading and unloading of trucks on the Glenmere side of the building continues to happen. I have 14 pictures and videos, all at times, at all times of days, showing 18-wheeler trucks running while being unloaded at the end of Glenmere Street, right in front of my house. These running trucks echo and shake our houses. The continuous rumbling for hours at a time is ridiculous. It is clear to me that ICS is going to do what they want, when they want, having the pictures and videos at my possession that I have. At the last meeting, it was suggested by one of the board members for us to call the police concerning these issues. I for one believe that our law enforcement have much more important issues than to come down 14 times in a three-month period to stop ICS from working and not abiding by the planning board's suggestions. I believe the planning board has the right and ability for its tax-paying citizens to limit and set forth conditions upon ICS. Many of us in the neighborhood have lived there, paying our taxes for 30 years and more. There are times that work goes on after 10:00 PM at night and starts well before 6:00 a.m., like this morning, when a truck was started and ran at 5:10 this morning. This happens Monday through Sundays on given days. Just because there is a business in town that borders a residential neighborhood that has grown far larger than it was years ago when the property was purchased, should not give that business the ability to ignore the simple courtesy requests of its neighbors. I own a small business myself here in town. I do a lot of work in Newton Brookline Wellsley. We are not permitted to work on Sundays. You're not allowed to work in these towns on Sundays. This group is asking to work seven days a week, which is ridiculous. I am asking the planning board to set the same common courtesy hours and days of operation that Mr. Turner has implemented for Turner Steel... that Mr. Turner has implemented for Turner Steel and its surrounding neighbors in the last twenty-plus years. I have a number of videos and pictures on my phone here. And the last time, I wanted to bring forth the Mother's Day, Sunday Mother's Day. It's going to take me a second to locate it. Please give me a second. I have so many pictures, it's going to take me a minute. Somebody else wants to go?
I just want to, Marcy Lee, twenty-eighth Glenmere Street. I'll just echo what Mike has said and what I've said in every meeting prior to this one. With all due respect, Mr. Gomes, I understand that you think your client has been a good neighbor, but the exact opposite is true, as evidenced by every conversation I've had with the owner, as evidenced by the staff telling me to call the police and hanging up in my face, as evidenced by the running trucks, as evidenced by the fact that he said he was going to put signs up that said, "No running trucks, no idling trucks. We still have them going on, they're still running, still idling." I understand that one of the arguments is that the trucks need to be running to be refrigerated, because the plants need to be kept at a certain temperature, but the plants are stored outside, so kind of confused about that one. Not sure why the truck needs to be running still. Also, if they're unloading from the truck to the outside to store the plants outside, truck should not be running. No reason for it, not because the truck is refrigerated, plants are being stored outside again. So again, they're not being good neighbors, not being receptive to the complaints of the neighbors next to them. It has been, we have fought tooth and nail for every concession that we've supposedly been given. I don't see evidence of that, so it's just going to echo everything that Mike's saying.
Can I approach one of the microphones?
Yeah, how long is this going to take?
I have two or three minutes. I have a few of them. Then let me put it this way.
Okay, let's hear one. I know you...
I won't even play, but let me just put it this way. So I have fourteen videos of eighteen-wheelers backed up to where they unload their plants. When last meeting, or two meetings, the last meeting, they were told, we were told by them that it was going to be unloaded at the front gate up by the cell phone tower. That is not happening. I have pictures of this, I forget what they call it, but it's a big thing they put to the back of the truck so these forklifts can drive up and get into the truck and then come back down. And they're not doing anything of what was asked of them, nothing. And to just give them a free, you know, seven-day-a-week pass is ridiculous.
Okay, so you're saying that, then, just, why am I sure that I'm getting this? That the unloading is done near the end of Glenmere?
It's still happening.
Not near, I know one time, we were talking about, because there was a loading dock near the cell phone tower. It's not being done there?
I don't know that it isn't, but it certainly, I have fourteen videos of it being done at the end of Glenmere Street. And when I say the end of Glenmere Street, the fence is where this attorney is and the truck is right where you are. And I mean, it's echoing and it's vibrating the whole neighborhood. They don't care. They don't care. It's a big business in a small business district.
All right. Okay, we're just trying to figure out what they... Did you want to speak or anything?
If, if I may, yes. I do understand some of the concerns of what the neighbors have put forward, but I believe ICS and the owner, D and R Realty, have came forward in good faith and made many attempts to make this a better situation for the neighbors. When I first became involved, there was issues of unauthorized use by employees after hours. That has been completely nipped in the bud and that is not going on. This is a business that is not easily kept within, because there's so many outside forces of shipments coming in. And what they do to be able to be responsible is use the front, as we said, near the North Main Street as the primary loading dock and loading area where most of that business occurs. With the fully built-out operation, it's only going to increase. Is there, we're not saying there's not times when the other parts of this facility are going to be used for loading and loading and general plant purposes. That is going to happen. That's the point of the business and being able to operate. And what they have done is try to reduce these issues of postings and having better discussions with their employees, keeping longstanding employees, and really trying to clamp down on these wholesalers, which is general great. But I do have to say regarding the idling, I think it's been well briefed that there is a requirement for these refrigerator trucks, and it's an exception under the law, and any unauthorized idling or unnecessary idling is simply not going on. If the truck can be shut off, it's going to be shut off.
How do you know that? How can you say that?
Just a minute.
We know that it's not.
Just a minute.
I do have a problem if they're using the parking lot for loading and unloading trucks. That's not the purpose of the parking spaces. The purpose of parking spaces is to have vehicles parked. So I do have a problem. If they're bringing the trucks all the way down to Glenmere Street, you know, and if that's, as you said, the primary, that should be the only. You know, you've got parking spaces, so now these parking spaces, now you're saying that, okay, a truck comes down, they're going to take up ten parking spaces. That's ten parking spaces that are no longer available for vehicles to park. That's the purpose of this right now. I'm looking at this. This is a parking field and not a loading and unloading area. So there should be no loading and unloading area anywhere within this parking. Otherwise, it's not parking.
Mr. Chairman?
Good, yes, Mr. Chairman.
How often have you been there to see their operations?
I've gone to this location under five times. I would say four.
So you have little to no knowledge of what's going on, other than what the people are telling you?
I have done my investigation and worked with my client in getting the information, but yes, that is who is reporting to me. But I also did my own independent investigation into the Glenmere Street drainage issue, which resulted to that entire corridor being cleaned up, including Mrs. Utka's, this area that we're talking about of in-between to reduce that issue. It's, there needs to be an opportunity for this business to continue, and the board can be rest assured, these complaints, if they do continue into the future, there's avenues of relief for them to come forward. But when we're looking at the design elements, I understand with more reason the fence, for example, along Utka versus trying to limit the functionality of this property. And there are other components to this building, but I do understand the concern regarding loading and unloading in that area.
Because we have been taught by these gentlemen standing, sitting right here, that loading is going to be upfront. Yet, as long as they have been in operation, the loading has not been upfront. There is little to no honesty from your client. And I have a hard time voting anything for this place. You need to be there five in the morning, at ten at night, and see what's going on, not listen to what other people say they want it to be.
If I could ask the, where, this area on C one where you have it shaded in, which is the concrete area, is that your designated unloading area, or is that only storage area?
That is a storage area. My understanding is that, as these folks said, and they have been backing trucks up to the end of Glenmere, unloading there. We can certainly do away with that. Concrete ramp is here. There are two more loading docks proposed over to this side, which is going to help with that. You can't see this side, can you?
Yeah.
Opposite side by Howard Street. Two other loading docks proposed over on the Howard Street side.
Okay, to the building.
To the building.
To the building. So they could unload directly into the building?
They can unload directly into the building in that location. And certainly, I'm just looking at the layout plan now, you know, if they needed to unload further forward away from Glenmere and cart things back to the outside storage area, then that's what they would have to do.
Okay, so where the ramp is, that's also a loading dock to the building?
The concrete ramp, that's right.
So that's all that?
Excuse me, that's actually two loading ramps.
That's two loading ramps.
One for inside and one for outside. There's a lift gate on that ramp.
Okay, there's a lift gate on the concrete ramp here as well, so I'm being told that's two loading docks in that location.
One for the interior, one for exterior.
Yeah, so there's two docks there, and we're proposing two docks on the Howard Street side as well.
So they could unload there?
Outside.
Outside?
Correct.
And then with their forklift, move it to the storage area in there?
Exactly. So there would still be outside unloaded?
Activity, right.
We drew that plan, we had an engineer, we got a building permit quite a few years ago.
Eric, can I ask you, Mr. Noes brought up a good point on the trucks unloading in this parking area. If there were cars there, can a truck come in from Howard Street, make a right-hand turn along Turner Steel, and make a left-hand turn and be parallel to Commonwealth Avenue to get back down there to unload down? If there were cars there, is that a feasible thing for the trucks to do?
I don't think an eighteen-wheeler...
Not the way it's drawn up.
I don't think an eighteen-wheeler would make that turn, if there were cars in the way. If these were lined with cars, now let me say this, we have seventy, one hundred and twenty-five parking stalls proposed, which meets the bylaw, but I think it's practically way more than it needed. I don't think you'll ever fill this thing. So I don't think everything will be parked, but we didn't want to look for a bylaw waiver with that. But I would agree with the member here that says, you know, if these stalls are parked in, you're not making the turn with an eighteen-wheeler to get down.
Okay, so I think one of the important things is where you're unloading, because that seems to be where most of the noise is and the activity is. So is there, I'm asking you, I'm not designing this, I'm asking, is it a way that you could have it unloading down here and then move the storage to out back?
Unload either the existing docks or the proposed docks and then cart things out back from there.
Yeah, but it would still be outside.
It would be outside activity unloading, but we would not park the trucks near Glenmere to do that.
But it'd be a considerable distance from Glenmere Street. And the neighbor in that particular case would then be Turner Steel, which I don't think trucks are going to bother him too much.
Yeah, that would be enough.
So what we're trying to do is try to come up with a way that everybody has, can live with it.
Sure.
So we could be looking at something there. And seeing as our town council is here, and the question came up on working on Sundays. And I'm old enough to remember when they were doing away with the blue laws, because at one time, nothing moved on, right, on Sundays. No trucks, no more. Half the things, stores couldn't be open. Is Sunday working a permitted thing, do you think, at this time, at those reduced hours?
Well, I think what I would say is that, I mean, one consideration here is that it's not, we don't have a bylaw that says anything about that issue. So when you ask me that question, it's really a judgment call based on general principles. So what I can say is that, like, our office had done some research and advised the board that hours of operation, in our opinion, feeding the local bylaw and site plan review, was something that could be conditioned. Has to be a reasonable condition based on the way the bylaw is wording it. It does speak to impacts on neighboring properties. So the key is that restrictions have to be reasonable. I'm an attorney. I'm not a policymaker, so as far as what's a reasonable condition, I feel like it's kind of beyond my scope to say yes or no to Sunday, because I can't say there's a case, I can't say there's a bylaw. So I would just advise the board that if there are restrictions on the hours of operation, including, you know, days of the week, they have to be reasonable in light of what the concerns are and what the issues are that are presented with the site plan. I don't know if that's a good enough answer for you.
Let me, maybe, so they can work on Sunday. I know the blue laws.
Right, in general, there's businesses all around town that are open on Sundays, so I think that's a fair thing to say.
Okay, so they can do it, and they are willing to restrict their hours here, so that is a, that can be done?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. My thing was, whether, it was, as Mr. Gomes referred to, because it was live things, plants are alive, that they had some leeway on it, but by right, they can do it on Sunday?
That's right. So if there was no site plan review on the table, I don't think that we'd have, that wouldn't be an issue. Right? If this hearing wasn't happening. And I would just, I mean, these things can get a little bit more complicated. So no one has the right to create a nuisance. So some noisy activity that impacts a neighbor, no matter where it is, whether it's here or elsewhere, there are avenues to address that type of situation. But just as a general matter, there's no prohibition on being a business open on Sunday, as far as I'm aware.
Thank you. Okay. One of the things, Jim, you alluded to it, you know, using the parking as a staging area.
Yeah.
So it can't be both, it has to be one or the other.
Yep.
Okay.
I would like somehow to physically actually prohibit trucks to go down there. I don't, you know, I'm looking at the two painted islands, you know, I know where, six spaces above what's required. Maybe make those raised islands, or somehow just prohibit any sort of truck going down there. You know, rather than, I mean, you know, it's all well and good, and I, from what I've heard from the neighbors and everything else, I don't really trust that this operation is going to be, you know, I don't even trust that at five AM sharp, they're going to start work, you know, or that. So I don't trust that we put conditions, no tractor trailers down there, they're still going to do it, tops, you know. It's just going to be an ongoing thing, unless trucks are, somehow tractor trailers are physically prohibited from going down there. And then you mentioned about the turns too, and I'd like to see a turning movement, you know, a tractor-trail attorney movement on these plans and show how, you know, like Hugh said, if it's coming in off of Howard Street and trying to get around the corner, that looks really tight for a WB fifty-five.
From what I have seen for tractor trailers there, I think it's hard for them to access that site without backing in from...
They always did back.
Yeah, they've got to back all the way in from major, which creates a safety hazard.
No, they back in from Howard Street.
Yes, that way, I can see that way, but if they're...
And they back all the way back.
Yeah, but if they're unloading where it's, it's being said they're unloading now, it's tight. They're not using single-axle thirty-eight-foot trailers in there. They're using twenty-four-foot tractors with another fifty-foot trailer, and that's a lot of things to manipulate.
Yeah, I mean, usually, we see, you know, when we're asked, you know, WB fifty-five, you know, and the turning movements on that, it doesn't look like they can, how would they do it anyways? If they come in front from North Main Street, you have to take a left into that parking area and then back into it? If you're coming in that way?
I'm not sure. I know how they did the Howard Street, because I'm familiar with that.
Yeah.
And, but...
Yeah, it doesn't look like they can do that around the building.
I think one of the things, you know, it comes up, when they unload over at Glenmere, they're right up against the neighbor's houses, and if you, the parking there, it can't be both. So if we could get the... So if we could get the unloading down by where the cell phone tower is and that loading ramp, the concrete ramp.
And across the front of the building, any place over to Howard Street.
And, uh, and, and Howard Street, if they, if they come in and they back down the way they always did it, it worked, they could, that, uh.
I just don't think the site is favorable to large tractor trailers.
I agree.
Period, I mean, not dribble.
Yeah. But if, uh, if it can be demonstrated that they can do that, that in there and not use the parking lot near Gl- Glenmere as a staging area, is that, is that something that, uh, first of all, ask Mr. Diaz if, if he can engineer such a thing, and, and, and the owners if, if, if that is a agreeable thing to move the, the parking, the staging areas down front?
I will say from a design standpoint, I believe we actually have illustrated this in pass metals that we made to the board, um, and given you that documentation, but we can certainly do it again. Um, that's why that's been designed the way that it is, uh, without raised islands and things like that, uh, and straight islands and things like that. Regarding the loading and unloading, um, I think it's reasonable to move that portable loading dock.
It, it can, once that other loading dock on the other side, it takes all the loading on the other side of the building. You know, we still have outdoor unloading and loading, so, I mean, but that, that movable ramp could go on the other side, or, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
And the thing is, is if and when they rent those, what they wanna use for leasing space, and just say that they're very successful and they use up all the parking spaces, that's just gonna be another headache for somebody manipulating a tractor trailer around.
Sure.
I mean, I'm sure it'll be one-stop shopping if somebody goes in there and gets run over, their car run over by a tractor trailer, and they're not gonna come back and do business.
I, I would think not.
Um, you, you based, Eric, you based the parking on, on the square footage of the building?
On the square footage of the building, that's correct.
Uh, do you have numbers of, of employees, what is actually being used in there?
Let me check the parking table, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, but we did. Uh, we were in office space based solely on square footage, uh, warehouse is one store per thousand, or one store, stall per three employees on the largest shift, um, so we had twenty-five employees, uh, which is eight and a half stalls, and the rest of it is based on the warehouse area usage, uh, which yields a total of a hundred and nineteen stalls and we're proposing a hundred and twenty-five. So, and to answer your question, it's based on both employee count and square footage of the building.
Okay, so what is a realistic number then?
I believe it's a realistic number, I mean, frankly, I think it's realistic based on your zoning bylaw. I would be, I hope they are very successful when they fill the parking lot, but that's a lot of parking spaces, that's a lot of spaces.
And if I may ask, sir, and I'm just thinking of a consideration of potential condition which might be satisfactory to the board is some type of, uh, measurement from Glenmere where there's to be no loading and unloading of tractor trailers. Uh, twenty feet past the Glenmere boundary, for example, and that'll resolve that. And I believe that there was instances that it, that did occur, of actual active loading and unloading, um, but also there's probably the instances of just standing trucks waiting to be serviced at the concrete ramps, potentially.
Respectfully, it's either gonna be a parking area or a loading and unloading area, and there's not, you can't have both.
Not within twenty feet, or.
You know, in Turner, that zone, that was prior to, um, when that originally went in, that was the selectmen who came to the agreement for the hours.
Yes, sir.
Originally, and it wasn't through, the question was made, there was no by-town council about site plan, or there was no site plan there, it was determined by the board of selectmen, it was a hot issue for a long time before they came up to, and they don't even, Turner is not even allowed to pack, if you've started until, what, six or seven in the morning?
Seven.
Seven in the morning, and any trucks that are waiting can't even be within the neighborhood, they sometimes park over in the town hall parking lot.
Yes, sir.
But it, it's a scheduling issue. You've got trucks coming in, and I don't know a trucking company in this world that doesn't have a schedule for deliveries. So you don't have ten trucks coming in, you, if you can only take one or two in, in a given period of time, then it's only scheduled one or two. So anything other than what is going to be immediately loaded needs to be scheduled different, that's just common business.
Yeah, I, I think, just conferring with Mr. Joe here, we can agree on behalf of the applicant, no loading and unloading in the parking area, we'll keep that a parking area. As long as we get the other four ramps that we need, there's no need for them to go over there. So, we can, we live with that.
Starting when?
Okay, and, um, and, and Mr. Gomes here, in putting a, a distance, so we'll, we'll come up with a.
I, I think the, uh, idea of the no loading, unloading in the parking space generally will solve that and eliminate the need for the measurement at that point.
So, so at, at which point the, the packing, the unloading will be down at the front?
Yes, e- essentially all of the, um, loading docks, I was just, you know.
We're on the Howard Street side.
Howard Street.
Yeah.
Can you just point those out, and show, which, and what will be blocked out?
In the chair, it's, there's two ramps here in this location, and then there's two ramps going in, in this location over here that will be accessed from the Howard Street side.
And what will you not be using?
This area.
So, on the other side of those arborvities next to the loading ramp, we should never see an eighteen wheeler in existence on that side over there.
That's what we're talking about.
And starting, ma?
Upon, I would say in order to make that agreement, we need those ramps up and running. So the sooner we can get that to happen, the sooner we can prohibit that from going. I would imagine the best way to word that, to protect the tenant, which is obviously my concern, and I understand that it may not be favorable, but it's upon occup- issuance of an occupancy grant. That way all four docks are up and running, and that they have no reason to move back there.
But that, that means that you could possibly have trucks there the whole summer?
Excuse me, Marcy.
Okay.
Identify yourself, please.
Sorry, Marcy Lee, twenty-eight Glenmere Street, so that means all summer long until those ramps are up and running, while we're enjoying our properties or trying to, you'll still have trucks there?
And construction vehicles.
Okay, well, that's an issue then.
My only suggestion is refrigerated trucks can be powered off of electricity if they're sitting for an extended, so they don't have to have the generator go. Every one of them has a electric plug. If for some reason you have to, I would consider not having any idling trucks down there. But if the refrigeration's gonna be on, then it should just run a cord from a, you, one of your light poles, and they could plug it in, and you don't have to have it idling.
But the refrigerant unit is still gonna make noise.
They don't make as much noise as if they were idling diesel. And, and the newer refrigerated trucks, I mean, they're all over the place, they're not noisy.
No, they're not, they're not.
It's the tractor that's.
We actually had the police come over one night, and they actually wrote up a report saying it, it wasn't.
It's the tractor, the tractors that make all the noise. They're the ones, and then especially if they're making a delivery, it went, people are trying to sleep.
Yeah.
One thing, if they show up, and it, and it's during the day, whatever hours we decide on, it's, it's, I believe it's, and to go along with what Mr. Bear said, Mother's Day is usually a day, every, nobody works, but if you're making a noise, making enough noise during the day that it ruins people's function of life during a daytime holiday-type thing, that's just, that's just being poor neighbors.
And, and Mr. Bear, you've been, I've seen you here.
I've been, I've been very patient, I know I'd be able to speak.
I, I, I'm not ignoring you.
That's all right, Michael Bear, thirty-two Glenmere Street. So a couple of things, um, that we've, we've been talking about, and one of them was the, and I know that he just said it, about the proposal of twenty feet from Glenmere Street. Well, twenty feet from Glenmere Street puts, puts that right in the middle of my bedroom, so that doesn't work.
No, I, 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 I think, I think if we move it out, out to the front, I, that really need anything there.
But what I'm trying to say is that this morning, the idling truck at five-ten was one of the trucks that works for the company, was one of the delivery trucks. So, and those are on the end of my property and the beginning of theirs, where my end, property ends and, and it begins. So, that's still noisy in that, in that aspect, in that area. Um, but one of the things that, and it was said here, and one of the selectmen said it, um, and I believe, I, I can't remember who it was, but it was for the lawyer about, you know, how many times he's been out there, and I say the same thing to Mr. Diaz, because two meetings ago, we were told that no trucks whatsoever would be going down by Glenmere Street because they weren't gonna be able to use that as a turnaround. And here we are, here I have fourteen videos of showing eighteen, uh, fourteen trailers pulling in, running and unloading their, their, their stuff. My answer to their problem is that if there's an issue with unloading the trucks at the beginning of the building over on the Howard Street side, hire more employees. It's that simple. Get more people to unload the trucks, then you don't have to worry about it getting done in a, in a timely manner. It'll get done in a timely manner, it's that simple.
I, I, I don't think it's any question, they, they have been noisy, they have done it right at your house. And that's, we, uh, we, we understand that. What we're trying to do is, is get it, get it away, and, and it appears that we're, we're able to move it quite a bit. There were just a couple, couple things here to finish up.
I agree, sir, but you've already presented this to them two meetings ago, and it's still going on. That's my point.
Well, it's still going on because we haven't come down with a final thing. When we come down with a final thing, when Mr. Diaz revises his plan and, and puts some notes on where, where some of this stuff is, at that, at that point, then, then it will be done. They, they, this going on and on, they're pretty much just doing the status quo because they haven't come up with anything. To change something, it, it, they don't know, but when they agree to something and we have a, have a, a plan, a procedure in, in place, then, then you should expect to only see that.
I, I would like to see them to minimize, even during construction, the loading and unloading on the Glenmere side. They got the, the Howard Street entrance, they've got the area that would give them, I mean, construction-wise, you're not gonna be working probably even as long hours as they're proposing. But I would like to see in good faith, they minimize the amount of idling, particularly their own trucks.
I mean, they might as well get used to it now, 'cause it, it's gonna be conditioned.
Yeah.
You know, the site plan, so they're gonna have to start figuring out how they're gonna change their operation. They're gonna have the trucks, yeah, you know, I agree, instead of parking all the way down to Glenmere, park closer to, to, you know, to the.
Unload on the road coming in.
Turner side, yeah, and, and then.
They're using it anyways.
Yeah, I'm sure their operation's gonna have to change somewhat because of that, you know, but, um, no, it's a good, it's a good point, I mean, do it now rather than wait six or nine months when you finally get the docks and, oh, wow, we gotta get more floor plus, we gotta get more employees, that's the way it's gonna be running.
The main issue here is not enough investigation was done with the owner and the property for the use of the property.
Yep.
It was a computer assembly building originally, computer parts assembly, it wasn't even computers, it's, they made parts, is what this initial building was taken from, and then it became a gym. This building maybe was bought at a good price, but there was a lot of homework done onto it being a prop site. We can't control it, the only thing we can do is make it work, because we can't say no. We're just gonna make it work so it benefits the people who vote for us, not people that live out of town and don't have anything to do with the town.
Amen.
Can I make a comment?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Um, my name is Helen Akeating, and I'm on, I'm on forty-four Commonwealth Avenue. I think that they, the hours are long, I understand that, that, um, they would like to have it at five o'clock in the morning. Well, we have little people that would like, maybe like to sleep a couple more hours and then get up and go, not everyone drives on twenty-four going into Boston, or wherever. A lot of people are local where they work, and they should be able to get up at a normal hour, like everybody else does. I don't, I don't even think that's an acknowledgement at all. And clo- and closing, I know Turner's deal was something like seven-thirty to nine o'clock at night. This is a major business that's going into a very small area and expecting all of the residents around there to accommodate them. And I think they ought to do a little bit more accommodation for us, especially their hours of work.
Well, one of the things is establishing the hours, because right now, they're virtually, they can, don't have any. So by doing this, getting this all under the, the site plan approval process, now we, now we have something. Otherwise, we never had anything. So it's a, it's important that we do do it.
Can I just say, just to follow with what you just said?
Okay.
That's exactly what I was trying to say, was that since the last board meeting, or two meetings ago, when we, all this was proposed or suggested, they, the company hasn't done a thing whatsoever to try to abide nicely for its neighbors. They've just done what they wanted, that's why I wrote that in there. They do what they want, when they want, how they want, and that's how it's been. And unless you, selectmen, put a stop to it, we're, as neighbors and taxpayers of this town, gonna suffer.
That's, that's why we're trying.
Completely done, thank you.
Okay, get, get to it. Okay, uh, um, the, the continuing defense along Mr. and Mrs. U- U- Uca, is it?
Uca, yes.
Uca, uh, property, how do you, you feel?
Should be done.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's a reasonable thing, I, I.
Yeah, it's relatively small request.
Yeah, okay, um, okay, we, we should have, in fact, I believe it's a no idling over five minutes. I don't like the school buses and stuff.
Might be up to ten.
Ten, but, but whatever it is, it, it should be some signage put up there so that, you know, somebody delivering something from out of state, they don't know what the Massachusetts laws are. So we should be, be looking for some signage there, and then. And, uh, then it, it can be, be, be addressed. Uh, and if, a lot of those people, they're gonna save some fuel by not sitting there having the thing run after half an hour too.
Refrigerant trucks are exempt from that.
Okay, but, uh, we, you should also look into, uh, as Mr. Stetson said, uh, having electrical hookups for, if they're gonna be there for any, any time. If, if they're making a delivery, how long did it, does it take to, to unload it? The, the back, the back door is open anyway, so that if they got the refrigerator i- in the front of the, the truck going, and they got the back door open as if bringing things out, it, it, that isn't, they're, they're cooling the air wrong. So, it, it, look in with, uh, maybe we can get some, um, uh, hookups nearby that they, that they can run, if they need to do it, but if they're unloading, I don't see why they, they need it.
If you're away from Glenmere, it shouldn't be a problem, because there's, there's really no, other than the church on Sunday from ten to ten.
They're not noisy if we're on those ramps, it, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, but if you're not on the Glenwood side of the building.
That's what I'm saying.
Then the only problem you're gonna have is probably the church on a Sunday.
Right.
Fair enough.
Yeah, right?
We can put power points at the ramps.
Well, they, yeah, but the church will be over by noon time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but they're only looking for five AM to, no, twelve, twelve to nine, so then it eliminates. so then it eliminates that problem.
Okay, I, I, I've got a question here, now, on, on Saturday you said six, uh, Sunday you're saying nine. Is that, wh- why do you want to be open later on Sunday than on?
The Sunday later date is specifically unique to this type of industry of the live plants and loading up for the week ahead essentially.
I thought it might be that, but I just wanted to get it on the record. So, uh, I, I, I think that the nine o'clock closing, everything is open to nine o'clock.
Or earlier now, it seems like more things close early now.
Yeah, but it's, it's still an awful lot of things are open till, till.
But you've got Turner, it's going to be open till ten.
I don't think Turner's open.
I don't think he shuts his doors until ten, but, but again, Turner's work is all, nothing is outside.
Yeah.
I mean, if he gets too noisy, he can shut his doors.
Okay, he may have people in his, in, in, in his facility working in the warehouse.
But they're in the building.
But the, but the, the office is closed at five, I believe.
Yeah, but I mean, he's still loading trucks for the next day, but it's within the building.
He's always in the building. So, I, I think the, the, the only question is the, is the five o'clock there? I know at, at six o'clock, the traffic really starts up, I know it.
Five o'clock it starts up.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, by six o'clock it really.
That is bad.
And, uh, I know that the, the schools, it's before seven o'clock they're lining up to get into the school, so that the, any, any of the people with, with young people are long before, before, uh, that the only, only thing is if we go with five or, or go with, with six, I think, is probably the question on, on, on the morning. What's, uh?
Well, I mean, it just sounds like the biggest part, and again, I'll go back to the idling at the trucks in by Glenmere Street. Get them out of there, you know, that limits the noise a lot in that area. I mean, that's the biggest thing to me, I mean, it's still, yeah, I, I, you know, I hate, honestly, I'd hate to live next door to this place too because of the hours of operation, but it is what it is. And I, you know, I drive twenty-four, get on there at four o'clock to avoid rush hours, so four-thirty it starts backing up. Yeah, that, I mean, that's, I, you know, probably the biggest thing for me is just get rid of the trucks out of there.
I think we'd come up to a consensus, I think we should do is, is have Eric revise the plans to show some of this, these things, you know, the, the limit of work, limit of unloading areas, put some limits on, uh, show some, some signage we're looking at that, uh, you know, that, whatever. I've seen them, the, the state has a specific sign for, for the idling of trucks. I, I've, I've seen them around, I, I can't quote it off, off hand, but I know it is, but I know Eric's, he can, he, he can find it.
We can handle it. So I've got, just to be clear, so I know what I'm doing, I've got signage for idling, I've got the loading areas, um, I've got the fence along, forgive me, I forget the building's name.
Continuing.
The continuing fence.
Akar.
That's Akar, that's correct, thank you. Uh, what else do I got?
I, I think, um, you should have some signs out at, at both Howard and North Main Street, no deliveries before or after, so that the, the drivers coming in, I assume the out-of-state ones are probably pretty much the same drivers that, that make the route. Put the signage out there so that, because the first thing, if you chastise them, but they say, well, no signs, I don't know. You know, put, put some signage out, out there on, on both, both those two streets, and, and with the, the hours of op- operation so they, so they know, so every, everybody knows.
What are you going to have for your hours of operation?
We're still discussing that.
Okay.
Have I, have I missed anything?
Mr. Jim, I don't know if you want more details regarding the lighting? A, a couple of the notes that you mentioned are on there already, but there's some.
Oh, okay, yes, yes, thank you. The, uh, so that the electrical people know, put on the, the, the timers and, and probably, you should have something out there for security lights, you know, at the, at the, at the building, at the Howard Street entrance and, and the other one coming in, and probably something out, out in the back. But it should be.
Yep, lucky.
Dimmed, dimmed down. Come up with where those will, will be and, and the timer so that somebody, electrician, it's, it's on here that he, he knows that he's got a, for whatever, whatever is, is in there. Thank you.
How's the truck going to access or back into the loading dock off North Main? I knew we were talking about that. Yeah, exactly, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you can get a plan that shows the turning movement and how he's going to actually physically come in off, off Main, how he's going to back into that loading dock.
Tractor trailers might have to be restricted to Howard Street, which would turn out to be a problem. Straight jobs can come in, that could be an option, they'll have to figure that out, I mean, if this car's there.
Do you, do you have straight jobs bringing plants into?
I don't work for the company, but I'm over there often, they do have straight jobs.
Straights and, is it?
Majority is straight jobs.
Okay, so tractor trailers are not the norm, they're, they're just.
The over, over-the-road drivers, when, yeah, those are tractor trailers.
Yeah.
For the most part, what ICS owns is straight jobs and vans, I believe they lease two tractor trailers. And those are, those are gone, you know.
Eric, can you come up with a, uh, truck routing plan to, to demonstrate it to, you see, I, I know it's, I know you have the, the program for it.
Yes, it's how they should have all signing too, if it's tractor trail that's coming out on Howard Street, they take a left.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they, the only reason they can come in that road is because they're coming to do business.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't.
It's not enforced.
It's, it's, uh, and, and you know, a lot of them, they, they got Waze or GPS and they're just following that and, and they all show you ways, they show you all the shortcuts around the, the lights and everything. So it's, it's a problem, but, but yeah, so some signage, uh, there, uh, okay.
Can I ask a question? The eighteen-wheelers coming in on Howard Street, are they entering off of North Main Street?
Yes.
Coming now, okay, so they're not going by the schools, the library and playground?
Well, they, if, if, if they don't, they're about the only ones that don't.
That's policing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, and it's, uh.
That's been a question for a long, long.
Yeah, now they, they.
Thank you.
I mean, I followed three cement mixes. They took a left at the high school, came all the way around and took a left on North Main Street, and they were local companies, it wasn't somebody from South Carolina.
I, I, I can say that the only trucks you don't see on the roads other than one-oh-six and twenty-eight is Turner Steel trucks, unless they're making a delivery. I, I, I commend them for, I don't know what he says to his drivers.
I don't have tickets.
But, but they don't do it. I, I don't know, I don't know whether he threatens to fire them or, or, I don't know. But, but you, you won't see them, other than if they're making a delivery. But everybody else, they, they go looking for the shortcut. So, uh, we're going to have a revised one, we've got to give them the, come up with the, um, the hours of operation, what's the consensus? I, I think the nine is no question, the only thing is really the five on the front.
If we could push that back to six, I think that would make a, a big difference. I don't live there, I'm just sent there.
I, I, I know six o'clock was my initial thing, as being a reasonable time because at six o'clock, things really are getting, getting going. I, I know, that's, it's okay, so we'll, we'll, so weekdays will be six to twelve, Saturday will be six to six, Sunday will be twelve to nine.
Weekdays will be six to nine.
Six to nine on weekdays.
Six to nine, yep.
Yeah, six to nine.
Six to nine on Saturday or six to six?
Six to six. They, they let their workers go home and party on Saturday night.
No, they party in the parking lot.
Yes, they do.
No, no, no more they don't.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do. I hear your workers yelling and screaming.
Not my workers.
His workers.
Okay.
Yeah, yelling and screaming at each other in the parking lot, I hear it quite often, I'll record it next time.
Not necessary.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, um, Eric, how long will it take you to put this together?
Um, when's your next meeting?
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks, and you would need the plans a week before that, roughly.
Yeah, a few days before.
A few days.
By, uh, once you're there, uh, basically, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just, um, looking at everything that's been said today and the light wisdom of this board and what they've come up with, some ideas, I am wondering if, uh, the board can leave it to my client to continue to operate with tractor trailers. They've been in business since two thousand seventeen, they've been operating, albeit not to everyone's satisfaction, but they have been utilizing this facility with trucks there. So I think it's undisputable that this property is accessible, which would eliminate that concern. Uh, and what we do have left over is conditions which, if everyone's in agreement, we could issue a decision today. Uh, and the concerns that I see in potential conditions are, there's no loading and/or unloading in the parking spaces, there's a fence along the Utca property off of Glenmere Street, which is a certain identifiable boundary mark based on the property distance alone, signage for no idling, signage for no deliveries before a certain hour for Howard and North Main Street. The, uh, lightning, lightning details were sufficiently provided regarding electrical timers and shut-off with reasonable security lights at the property and one in the rear. Uh, and a sign for Howard Street that they were to take a left out of that. I think if we were to put some bullet points down as conditions to your normal language in issuing your decision, we can go forward with a decision here tonight. And my last, I guess, consideration for the board is regarding the hours of operation, the six AM start time, that works for the vehicles themselves, but, uh, it would be beneficial for the light duty of that first hour of the employees at least accessing the facility, coming inside, getting ready, uh, in the interior before the trucks go on the road for six o'clock, and that's something that I see being suitable.
I, I, I don't see any problem with, with your own workers because you can't have your trucks waiting there, you know, coming in at, at, at six-oh-two and, and, and the, your employees are wandering in with a cup of coffee and a newspaper and the other hand, so, yeah, yeah, I, I don't think cars have ever, ever been a problem. So the, uh, it'd be the, the truck that, and, uh, rather than doing it with conditions, I'd, I'd like to see all of this thing on, on, on paper, especially, you know, one of the things that concerns, to make sure that the, the trucks do have, have room to, to turn there. That's, that's why I'd rather see it, it come in, then we know what we're, we're doing on. Otherwise, a lot of times with the conditions, it, it, now it becomes questionable. If it, if it comes in, and I'm sure that Mr. Diaz will, can get all of this to satisfaction, then when we vote, that's it, it is done. It's nothing, it's nothing lingering, it's no questions.
And during the two weeks, maybe they get their act together and prove that they're gonna do, start doing the things tomorrow or the next day, within the next day or so, start adhering to some of this stuff so that we can hear from the neighbors and everybody else that, hey, they're going to go along. Doesn't have to be, but, you know, the unloading, move it to the other side. It might even be better when you're doing construction to have that parking lot.
Be based on occupancy? You know, I, I'm, I, I'm going to have cranes, I'm going to have steel, you know.
Yeah, but you, but that's, that's different than the noise we're having now.
I understand that, what I'm saying is, these cranes.
When you, when you construct out front there.
Yeah, I'm going to, that's going to be nice to you.
That's going to be, that's going to be, be something, something else.
Yeah, that's going to be just coming in.
What we're, what we're talking here is the operation of, of this.
Correct.
When you're doing construction, that's, that's.
They would have to kind of go back on that side, you know, until unloading. Or at least I can give them back that parking lot and I move inside work. Once I get the building erected, you know, I can free up some of that parking space so they can do some work in that area, but.
Well, you, you can get it going until you, you are in there and, and.
Oh, absolutely, I'm just saying when construction starts.
But, but, uh, the, the construction, we, we're looking at operational here. Because what, what you're, you're doing there is, is a construction that, as long as you do, you know, pre-construction practice.
Right, what, but to his point, he said, can we stop this tomorrow? Okay, yeah, we can start making some changes, but assuming we have a permit in thirty, sixty days, it's going to go back to that way.
Yeah.
They're going to move that side, as long as everybody understands that, and I'll move quickly to get them out of here.
Yeah, during construction, we, we know it's going to be so.
As long as everybody understands that. So what has to go back? You go, them unloading and loading tractor trailers on the Glenmere Street side? They have to operate. That's not my problem, that's yours.
No, but.
Oh, it's not my problem.
Oh, no. Gentlemen, gentlemen. They, they can, they don't have to go all the way back there, they can be loading down next to Turner Steel out in that parking lot.
Yeah, just staying on that side.
Yeah, and you own the parcel out in front, the farm and lot, lot and property. So any staging that you've got to do, you can do right across the park.
Yeah, we played on that.
So, so I, I, I don't think it's a bigger problem, but, uh, they, they can, they don't need to go over into that, the, the parking lot down by, by Turner's, they can, they can go in there and, and, and still do the unloading, it'll be, uh, I'm sure they can make it work. But, um, okay, with that, let's, uh, we've come, come to a consensus, put it all together in a, in a next meeting.
Got it.
We will, we will, we will, uh, we will vote on it when we, when we see it.
Okay.
Everybody happy, okay, then I will, uh, closest hearing at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
How you doing? Good, how are you? Good. We've run into each other before.
Yeah, we've worked together at some point.
Yeah, but I don't remember exactly what it was.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember that.
Eric.
Yeah, it's nice to see you, nice to see you last night.
Yeah. I looked at Sam Gay and Todd.
That one, he wasn't there.
Okay, yeah, I don't have much time, you're going to have to talk fast.
We'll have to shut up.
Oh, yeah. So it was breached. That was probably weird because, what, is that, um, GTE?
GTE, yeah.
Then I withdrew because I took a lot of position as a city attorney.
Yes, yes, that's right.
So that was probably a litany meeting.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your work, Eric.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Let's start our presentation.
Oh, thank you very much.
A lot of people don't.
That's okay.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Cross, for coming here.
I'm okay with that.
No, someone has to ask. Law isn't that. One can handle it.
Nice, nice to meet you. Good man, huh?
Good to see you, everyone.
Good night, Matt.
Good night.
Thank you.
Misses Yoo.
Take care.
Okay. We'll be opening the other hearing in a minute, Ben. We'll be opening the other hearing in a minute, Ben.
Ready for commercials?
Yeah.
What they did while she for thirty years of, uh, Adam Hunt with Level Design Group.
Okay, wait a minute, let me, let me open the, the hearing and say some words.
That's good, I guess, just straight.
What hour, hour is the operation around here?
Nine o'clock.
Five AM. Five AM. Be a early tone.
Okay. To time being nine o'clock, I will open the public hearing for thirty-eight and forty United Drive for a special permit and a site plan.
Adam Hunt with Level Design Group, United Drive. We'll talk about thirty-eight United Drive. Uh, we just had a couple of small revisions to the plans. Uh, we made the addition of the shed and the bollards around the transformer. We'll throw that on the floor.
Okay, you gave us, have we got little ones?
They should be. I have, uh...
Sorry, I thought I mounted it. You did not.
Mr. Chairman, if we can just confirm the version, just make sure we're looking at the same versions of the plan?
Please.
What date, what date is it?
It is, uh, five eighteen.
Uh, the date stamped at, uh, uh, May twenty-two.
Yeah, way in the right hand corner, if you're looking.
Five eighteen, yeah. These are, these are the...
Yeah, they, the bollards around the transformer and the shed along the tree, interesting trees and... Uh, it was really the only additions to the plan.
What sheet are you on?
Uh, actually shows up on all the plan sheets, I believe, but I'm looking at four point O. I'll put three point O to show it.
Okay, and, and this is for, did you remind us that this is a warehouse?
Yeah, hundred and thirty thousand square foot warehouse.
Okay, um, you've, you've gone through, kind of, commisized the drainage and...
Yes.
And everything. Did this, the wetland line is established?
Yeah.
And are you putting a, you're putting a retaining wall along the edges here?
Yes.
And... Can you go to lighting plan? Are you keeping it zero outside? You contain all your light in, within?
I believe we are.
Looks like it. The blue is all, blue is all zero.
Yeah.
It looks like you...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That you, that you achieved there.
Yeah.
Do you know what the, uh, warehousing is good to be for? Have you got a tenant yet?
No. Uh, well, for the MBTA, but I...
Well, this is MBTA?
I think it's what, I think it will be as well. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent on that.
Yeah, we're still trying to figure out what the, what their story is.
Of course, he has to figure out what they're doing.
Uh, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on that.
Okay. So the typical conditions we have for that, you have no problem?
Right, exactly, sure.
Okay, the site plan. Are you, now, uh, forty, that's a, could be a, that's a separate freestyle.
Yeah, and we just presented, uh, conservation last night.
Do we have, do we have, uh, plans for forty?
Yeah, um, we've submitted them. I don't know if, I, I've only had what I have, I have a copy I can give you, but I don't know.
So we're gonna have to meet another night on...
No, I think we, we have plans.
Someone emailed me and like, to check, and I said, I told them what it was, and then they seemed to think, okay, we're, we're all set. Are you crazy?
It was, you sent them by email, whether or not the hard copies were submitted prior to that. I'm not sure.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I know, well, it was back in April before.
I wanna say it was April twelfth was the last revision. Is that correct?
Yeah, April twelfth or eighteen, something like that, April twelfth, twenty.
But you still, that con con for that one.
For...
Con con.
Yes, for forty, yeah, we just presented.
Thirty are offset, though.
Thirty offset, yeah. Forty, they basically said they were...
We gotta wait for con con.
Yeah, I think, I think that was continued to the twentieth with con con.
Yes, and they're really just waiting to hear from NHGSP, which should happen any week now, hopefully this week.
So we're not doing forty?
Um, I mean, I guess if it's...
We, we continue...
We're waiting for conservation anyway, so we may as well just continue.
So we'll ask for it, okay. So we, okay, so we won't, we won't hear?
I can present, but it's all gonna miss get read.
No, we're not gonna act on it. Because if con, con hasn't blessed it, it's wasted time for us to look at it.
Okay, so, um...
Do I have a really small version? I don't know if that would be helpful or not.
Forty, no.
What, thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight. We got thirty-eight.
Sorry, I was thinking forty.
Okay, um, so we're going to need you in, in writing, ask for continuation for forty.
Okay, I'll send that in.
And, uh, any idea when, there has to be a date and time, sir?
Uh, I will go for the next meeting.
And you think it'll be in, in two weeks?
Yeah.
When do you meet with con con?
Because, well, yeah, we're meeting with con con in two weeks.
On the Tuesday before.
And if, if nothing, if we don't hear from NHGSP, then we'll have to reschedule both, continue both. Uh, but for now, I'll, I'm gonna shoot for the next meeting.
Okay.
We're shooting for that, for con, conservation, so may as well shoot for that.
So what is it, let's see, that is, uh...
Twenty-first.
Or you're coming in the one month. Twenty-first.
Otherwise, we're not meeting the first one in July, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Neither, yeah.
So we'll be...
Probably tomorrow.
So if you, yeah, you get it in, otherwise you're gonna lose, lose...
Not the end of July, here.
Okay, um...
Hopefully we hear from NHGSP this week or next week. Let me just make sure before, and see, yeah. In fact, should I just plan on sending plans immediately? Do you guys need hard copies of the current plans for forty?
Uh...
Because NHGSP is the, the whole of it, so it's not gonna...
Yeah, we, we should have some, uh, hard copies.
All right, so I'll just send those as soon as I can.
Yeah, you can, uh...
And NHGSP.
In fact, if you, if you want, Tuesday you work, bring them with you Wednesday. You, you, you're all set with con con on Tuesday.
Oh.
Print them up.
Bring them.
And bring them with you. Now we, now we...
Okay, great.
Because we want them for that file.
Yeah.
And we want it, and we want to have a, we don't want to prove it without having planned what we're looking at, so, yeah, just, just bring it.
As long as, yeah.
That'll, that'll save your own postage or, you know, running coming back and forth and... So what we, what we have here is just to approve this with the same conditions that, um, that we have imposed on other, uh, businesses in the Water Resource Protection District. And I gotta do some, some reading here. We have, we have to make a determination that, uh, meet the criteria, criteria for section six, excuse me, section four point six, point nine, point three, A, is consistent with the purpose and intent of section six point four. B is appropriate to the hydrology, natural topography, soils, other characteristics, the site to be developed. C will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impacts on the Water Resource Protection District. And D will not adversely affect an existing or designated future well. So we'll, um, need somebody to make a motion that...
We'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Noyes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson. And, uh, Mr. Hurley votes aye. The vote is unanimous of the four present. And we also have to make sec, findings for section seven point five, point three, point one, A. The specific site is appropriate location for use of such a structure and conditions. B, use as developed and operating will not adversely affect the neighborhood. C, there will be no nuisance or hesitation, vehicles, pedestrians, or volume greater than the capacity of the streets affected. D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And E, access to the site over streets is appropriate for the types of vehicles involved. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, agree with these findings. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Noyes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kinnahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. The vote is unanimous of the four present. We also have to, uh, vote for the, um, site plan approval. All those in, in favor of granting site plan approval?
Aye.
We, we need a motion.
Motion. Move to grant site plan approval.
Site.
Mr. Noyes?
Aye.
Mr. Kinnahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. The vote is unanimous of the four present. Uh, we will, uh, prepare, prepare that document.
The conditions on the site plan?
The conditions are the same as what we found.
Oh, okay, all right.
But we still don't know what's going in here or what kind of activity is gonna go on.
Mr. Hunt's gonna find out.
That will get more information.
We, we, we gotta have, have a walk. It, it, it appears that it's just...
You know, if it's gonna be jiffy little headquarters, we need to know that.
Yeah. Well, I think we've, I think we've already said this, no, none of that, but we would like to know. We got a copy of the lease, which, I think it's sixty pages, the lease. And, uh, it says everything but what they're doing. And in fact, I forget who sent it to us. He, he agreed, he couldn't figure out what they were doing either. Some, somebody in there must know. But I, I think we've got it covered, what they talked to.
Yeah.
We, we just, you just wanna know, we'd like to know. So if you could find that, I would very appreciate it.
Okay.
With that being said, I'll, we'll, uh, close the public hearing on thirty-eight. And, uh, Mr. Hunt is going to send a written request asking for, uh, thirty, excuse me, forty
Forty.
To be, uh, continue to June twenty-first. I'll need a motion to, uh, accept his request.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Vote is unanimous of the four present. Thank you for coming.
And how many copies of plans should I bring to conservation? What do you got?
For us, we need, uh, we need five, we need six. And, uh, we're going to need Building Inspector Assasa, DPW, and Building Inspector.
Okay, so I need four now.
So we need, print ten.
Ten, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. A public hearing for all.